Thank you. Would someone like to make a motion to return the regular board meeting to public session, please? Mrs. Van Seis, thank you. Is there a second? Dr. Banater, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. I'd like to call the regular board meeting to order. All board members are present except Mrs. Leatherbarrow. In Mrs. Leatherbarrow's absence, I've asked Mrs. Van Seis to be acting vice president for this evening. I will like to recite the pledge of allegiance for us, if we could, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic, which stands one nation, one God, indivisible,天地无边， and just for all. Please be advised that in the event of a fire emergency and an evacuation should be necessary, an alarm will sound. Please note all the marked emergency exits and evacuate well away from the building. At this time, we do request that everyone please silence their cellphone or other electronic devices, please. Would someone like to make a motion to add an addendum to the personnel consent agenda and approve the agenda as amended? Mrs. Beeger, second. Mr. Bornstein, is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Dr. Marchloff, what do we have for board recognitions this month?
Thank you, Mr. Lemay. Last month, we announced the December 13th vote on a new capital project that would upgrade the district's music facilities. So it seems only fitting that tonight, we spotlight two East High music students who are the product of Williamsville's award-winning music program, along with one of our veteran music teachers, Dr. Stephen Shuen. Each of the three won recent honors for their work at the state and national level. To introduce the segment, Mike Russo, our instructional specialist for fine arts and performing arts, will present a short video featuring the original compositions of the students to be recognized tonight. And then, East Principal Brian Swatlin will introduce us to our honorees. Mr. Russo?
Thank you, Dr. Marchloff, and good evening, everyone. We're going to start with a short video featuring our two students. They've been selected as all-state composers. The pieces they composed were first performed at the District Poetry, Music, Art, and Dance Celebration this past April. Both Ellery and Alex submitted their compositions to NISMA and now are part of a select group of students from all over the state who are going to be recognized at the end of November at the NISMA All-State Conference. This video was taken at the poetry celebration in April, and it's important to note that there are multiple layers going on here. Each composition that they wrote is based on the poem of another district student. And in the case of Ellery's composition, she composed her piece based on a student poem, and after she composed her piece, a district dance team put together a choreographed dance piece based on her music. So there's multiple layers, and it's really exciting. The video clip is about four minutes long. It goes right from one to the other, so hang on until the end, and please enjoy this short video clip.
Well, good evening. It's a pleasure for me to introduce two students who exemplify what it means to carry the torch and, you know, what amazing amount of talent that there is at East High School. First, we have Ellery Farbo. She is a senior at East. She's the principal clarinetist of the East Symphony Orchestra and Wind Ensemble. She also sings in the East Chorale. Ellery studies with Will Anstall, the principal clarinetist of the BPO. Her composition for the NISMA Young Composers Honor Concert is entitled "Colors." It is written for clarinet and piano. Ellery will perform her work at the annual winter conference accompanied by Dr. Stephen Shuen. We also have Alex Francisco, who is a junior at East. He holds the principal trumpet position in the East Symphony Orchestra, Wind Ensemble, and Jazz Ensemble. He studies with his father, Jamie Francisco, who is also an outstanding trumpet player and an officer for the Williamsville Music Boosters. His piece for the NISMA Young Composers Honors Concert is entitled "Freedom." It is written for full concert band. The East Wind Ensemble will be performing "Freedom" at the winter conference in Rochester. So congratulations to our two students. I think both of them wanted to talk tonight to the board? No? Okay. So additionally, Dr. Stephen Shuen, who is a band director at East High School, has received several composition awards recently. First is the Welcome Christmas Carol Contest for his piece "The Little Cradle Rocks Tonight." He will travel in December for the premiere of this piece, sponsored by the American Composers Forum and Vocal Essence. He also won first prize in the Edwin Fissinger Choral Composition Contest for his piece "Mother Goose Gems," written in honor of his mother. He will travel in March of 2019 for the premiere of the piece, sponsored by North Dakota State University's Chaley School of Music. Dr. Shuen previously won the 2016 Master Chorale of Tampa Bay Christmas Carol Contest with his arrangement of "Silent Night." It is my pleasure to congratulate Dr. Stephen Shuen.
Just like to say real briefly how proud I am of the kids. Thanks for recognizing them and me, and also thank you for the great work you're doing with our new facility project. On behalf of the music program, I'm sure Mike Russo has eloquently said it, but I'm going to say it on behalf of those of us in the trenches, thank you very much.
I would like to take a brief moment to thank all of our veterans that have served, fought for, and defended our rights and freedoms in this country. If it weren't for them, we would not have a public school system that allows for any topic to be taught. If it weren't for them, we would not have the rights to express our opinions. If it weren't for the veterans who fought hard in wars of the past, we wouldn't be sitting here today freely discussing our opinions and our thoughts. We all know, or are related to someone, who has served this country. My own father fought in the Korean War. My grandfather, a World War II pilot. I can never thank enough every single veteran for all that they have done, all that they have sacrificed, and all they have defended for every person in America. From everyone here on the board, I wish to personally thank every single veteran again for all that they have done. We will never forget.
Is there any other board acknowledgements this evening? Nope. Okay, Mrs. Beeger, could you please read the board's public expression statement?
Sure. Welcome to all who have come to observe this regular board meeting. For Policy 1510, the board has set aside 30 minutes for public expression, a time when we invite members of the community to share their ideas and concerns with us. We welcome this opportunity to hear from you. Each person is given up to three minutes in which to address the board. You will be signaled with a yellow flag at two and a half minutes so that you may conclude your remarks. This is a meeting held in public rather than a public meeting, which means we will not be engaging in dialogue with members of the community this evening. Rest assured, we are listening carefully and we do take seriously what you have to say. I would also like to ask that you demonstrate respect for Austin and for one another by speaking to the issues, giving us ideas, sharing your opinions, but not engaging in any personal attack. Thank you for your cooperation. Do we have anyone that would like to speak this evening? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda items seven, eight, and nine as presented? Mr. Bornstein, thank you. Is there a second? Mrs. Van Seis, appreciate it. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular board meeting that was held on October 23rd, 2018? Mrs. Beeger, second. Mr. Mecca, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. The budget fiscal program and legislative team met on Thursday, November the 8th. I believe Mr. Mecca attended this meeting. Do you have a brief report you could share with us, Mr. Mecca?
Sure. Those are two meetings that are back-to-back. So there are two separate reports, even though they're attached, you'll see as one. In the budget and finance meeting, we looked at the first draft of the 2019-20 budget, and there is going to be leadership restructuring. There will be an executive director who will be their point eight and an associate director who will be their point four. They're hoping to drive more revenue into the organization through sponsorships. And that's going to become important because they are facing increasing rental costs. They have a 750-square-foot office space that they lease from Erie One Bosse's who in turn is leasing the entire building from someone else. And the costs of the entire building are going up, which is being shared, you know, kind of proportionally with other people that are renting space in the building. So they're working on keeping costs under control so that we don't have a major rate hike going forward. One of the events you might have seen today was canceled. In terms of the upcoming events, we received an email from ECASB today canceling the November 15 speedboarding session on the use of strategic data. I guess they didn't have enough people signed up by this point in time. And then in terms of the legislative meeting, which is the second of the two meetings, we discussed the legislative roundtable that President Lemay and Dr. McLaren and myself attended. I'm not going to rehash that since we've had a thorough review of this through our liaison reports previously. And there was a discussion of having a legislative breakfast program. They're looking for districts in the north towns to host the event, just in case we might be interested in hosting. Other places might put it out there too, but if you wanted us to host that event or if there was this possibility, we could discuss it and I could take that back to them as an offer if we were interested in that. That's pretty much about it. Any questions?
Do you know what's involved in choosing to host an event? Is it just providing space?
I know very little about it, but what I have gathered is that it's on a weekend, I think a Saturday, and I think that there has to be some arrangement to have either a catering company or the school district provide some sort of food. I don't know if that's something that is paid for by ECASB or something that we would provide as a host. But if we had any interest, I could find out more, of course.
Thank you.
And that was part of the legislative roundtable that you were talking about?
Yes.
That's what we're talking about?
In the legislative meeting, we were discussing a breakfast program where they want to bring legislators in to meet with the component school districts to talk about matters that are important to us.
Okay. Thank you.
I would love to host it. I don't know what the rest of the board members feel, but of course, cost would come into question on that if we have to actually supply breakfast and how many people would be there, but...
I would say that I would be interested in that as well, but I think we need to look at the cost. We already pay a great deal of dues for NISMA towards that, so I'm hoping that they'll provide or cover the costs. I don't want to incur any more, you know, cost to our district, but if you can maybe find out the details, that is something that we're interested, that we've talked as a board, that we would like to meet with our legislators more, so...
Yeah, certainly. I don't know, you know, the specific details about the food issues and items, but I can preliminarily say that we might have some interest and we'd need more details.
If you're asking for details, I'd be curious if the actual legislators would be coming to meet with us or just members of staff. Because I think it would be worthwhile if legislators were really to come to meet with school districts, but if they're just going to send somebody, not to diminish the role of staff members, but if we're going to invest our time and effort into something like that, I would hope that the actual legislators would come to meet with the school districts.
Yeah, I don't know if the roundtable is any indication because the roundtable occurred right before elections. But at the roundtable, we had legislators present and members of staff were also present, but the legislators themselves were present. But this would be held at a different time, not before an election, so I don't know how that plays out.
Mark, if you're going back to them, could you also ask if it needs to be hosted in a facility, a district facility, or if an individual can host on behalf of the district?
Oh, okay, will do.
Thank you.
Can I ask a clarification question on that? If it were hosted by the district at an alternate location, is this like a commercial location or like a residential location?
Yeah, my question goes...
You're not sure, right?
Yeah, I'm not sure, but...
Okay, just what type of other... I didn't know if you were offering your house.
Actually, I was.
Okay. So I can explore some issues with food and space and kind of see where we're at and get back to everybody.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. As Mr. Mecca already mentioned, the speedboard dessert forum that was to be held this Thursday has been canceled. There is an Albany update with David Little. This is going to occur on Thursday, December 16th, from 6:30 till 8:30 PM in the Bosse's offices in West Annika. Currently, I have nobody signed up to attend this. Is anybody here at the table looking to go, would like to sign up now? If anybody changes their mind or comes back around and would like to do that, please let Mrs. Carey know. Yeah, Mr. Mecca?
Sorry, I was deep in thought on the previous issue. Can you rehash what that was about?
The Albany update that David Little, I believe, is going to be hosting is on December 6th. And right now, I have nobody from the board attending that yet. I will be out of town, so I cannot attend. The Bosse's facility is in Harlem Road in West Annika?
I'd be able to go.
Okay. So we've got one... Is that a maybe or a yes? Is that a maybe or a yes? It's a maybe? Okay. Just let the district clerk know. Does anyone have anything else to report under the Erie County Association of School Boards tonight? Nope. Okay, moving on to the New York State School Board Association. We had the 99th Annual Convention that was held October 25th through the 27th in New York City. The board attendees included myself, Mrs. Leatherbarrow, Mrs. Beeger, Mr. Mecca, Mr. Meyer, and Mrs. Van Seis. Reports were provided by all the attendees. Topics the board members were trained on included. Kind of rattle off a bunch of what I noted here. A lot of us attended the Commissioner Eliot's address. There was discussions on ESSA, the board governance, special education laws, assistive technology, diverse community, communication under pressure, school finance and school aid, school climate improvement, open meeting laws, school board superintendent partnership, redefining academics, addressing mental health in schools, and school safety. That's the topics that board members attended. I did mention in a previous board meeting here that we were looking at doing like postgraduate surveys, and I had brought up that we could look at the conference to see if there was any vendors or anything like that there. I did find some information. I forwarded some of that back to the board members here. So this was, to kind of give you guys recollection, this was graduation surveys. The idea would be data to review educational programs so that we can improve our programs and our offerings, support students for success after high school graduation, accountability piece, analyze our curriculum's programs from a graduate's point of view or perspective. So I found a company, not necessarily endorsing them, but I'm just kind of summarizing what they brought to the table. Company called LifeTrack Services. They provide surveys in multiple facets, from the United States Postal Service, through email, through online, through QR codes, through text messaging, through phone calls, all to maximize responses. And they claim a success rate somewhere around 65%, if I recollect correctly. They do numerous surveys. The ones that I focused in on would be a senior exit survey. Then they have an 18-month follow-up survey. And then they have a five-year follow-up survey. And they kind of group those together as a package, but you can purchase individual surveys as well. Questions on these surveys were 100% customizable. So they had their preset, but they also allowed for a lot of customized questions that the district might have. The idea here is to give direct feedback from graduates. It's a proactive approach rather than a reactive approach. What else can I tell you about it? Pricing. The three survey package, the senior exit, 18-month, and five-year package, they bundled together at a flat rate of $14 per student. And that is aidable, which means we can go through Bosse's, I believe, to get aid back on that. I don't know what that would do, how much or the rate would be for that. They also have a $299, that's $299, flat-rate, online senior exit survey. So if we didn't like the idea of doing the package of three surveys, they could just do a senior exit survey for us of all the current seniors at each school. And again, that was $299 per school, so $300 per school. And then, of course, they do compile all the reports, show trends, charts, analysis, all that sort of stuff. Again, not endorsing it, just throwing it out there. I said I would kind of report back on this and let you, as the board, decide if that's something we want to do, not do, consider. Don't even have to make a decision on that now, but I did just want to share what I found at the conference for you all to digest. Any comments or questions on that? Yes, Dr. McLaren?
Do you happen to know if any area schools use this company?
I don't. Dr. Marchloff may. I know, I think he was digging into it a little bit too. I do know that they've been in business, oh, and I forgot this number. I want to say it was over 20 years. And they've addressed a lot of, maybe it was 18 years, they've done a lot in the security risk assessment area as well for confidentiality and that sort of stuff, which was a concern, especially since this is, you know, student data that we're dealing with. But I don't, I honestly don't know of anybody that's used them. Mrs. Beeger?
Will this be a discussion item a later time, or are we discussing...
It is not in the agenda for anything later this evening, so if it's going to be discussion or voted on, it would have to be at a future board meeting. We can discuss it though now, though, by all means. Questions, comments? I'm open.
My initial comment is that I think our district has done a good job of surveying in different levels and different mediums. And the idea of employing a company, I would want to know more about the benefits of doing that when we have people in our district that organize surveys. But it's not my expertise, so I would want to learn more. Aside from that, my question would be, how can you measure success beyond high school? Because I think that there are many ways of looking at what makes people successful. So I'm hesitant to think about employing a company to survey our graduates on success when I don't necessarily think a certain job means you're successful or, you know, quality of life or happiness, or I don't know. It just, it seems like an odd investment, in my opinion. But I'm interested in learning more, if the rest of the board is interested as well.
Mrs. Van Seis?
I agree with Mrs. Beeger. Right now, when you graduate, guidance counselors already are tracking exit with maybe a college or career, you know, data with it. So beyond that, I'm not sure what else we're looking at other than I can tell you right now that the state is requiring students with special needs to do a postgraduate survey, and it's not going well at all. Because the way to even receive feedback is not effective the way that they're doing it, and no one can really figure out how. So again, I'm not sure what we would do with this data. I would like to see our money spent on the students that are currently within our district and serving those students for the now. and serving those students for the now, where instead of worrying about post-graduation. Because success does look different for everyone and there are different paths, and that's certainly okay.
Mr. Mecca?
One of, one of our prime goals is to make sure that our students are college and career-ready, career-ready. And I think it's probably a good use of our time, effort, money to see if we really are truly preparing people to be college and career-ready. And I think that in talking to Sean about this issue when we were at the conference, it seemed like there were possibilities of scaling into, into this area versus going into it fully. So I, I think I would be in favor of starting to explore it maybe through one of the cheaper forms of surveying those that just recently graduated to see if they were able to find jobs or if they're going on to higher education at this point. To truly see if, if our students are college and career-ready, which is one of our main goals.
Any other comments? Mr. Meyer?
More so a question, but don't we all already get data on how many of our students go to college every year?
How many that reported to Guidance, yes. So I guess- How many actually graduate, say, in four years, five years, six years, or come away with a college degree or drop out or anything like that? We don't have that data. Not that I'm saying that there's value in that.
No, I'm just, I'm just wondering if it's duplicative at all. But I agree with much of what Mark said.
Any other comments, questions? Dr. Banater?
Yes, I'd be interested in learning more about their measures, especially around quote-unquote "success." But I think we could take a look at what their benchmarks are and, and see if we can learn anything from that.
I did provide some sample surveys when I emailed this out. I don't have them with me here tonight, but I'm, if any of the board members don't have those any further, I can certainly get them. We can also ask them to come back and give a presentation or something along those lines if we want. We could also, you know, I'm interested more from the district's point of view on this, this matter as well. Is, is there value in this? I know we had talked previously that, you know, to, to account for this amount of data would be, you know, probably a part-time position, if not three-quarters of part-time position. So I mean, you know, from a cost justification point of view, their package is probably less expensive than paying an employee, but I could be mistaken in that too. But I'm curious, Dr. Martzoff, what's the district's thought? And, you know, should we pursue this or no?
Well, I think you have to take into account if you're going to do this year-over-year for 13 years, say, in a row to get through an entire group of students in the district. That's 10,000 students at roughly $14 per student, that can get pretty expensive. So it might be better to think about hiring our own employee to perform some of this survey work on WITS, particularly with recent graduates or students as they're about to graduate, to sort of self-report on what their plans are, what they're looking to do, what kinds of scholarships they were offered, things of that nature. And then perhaps consider what we might want to do in the next steps. I've talked to this particular company, their representatives, and I've also talked to a couple of districts who have used them in the past. And what came back to me for why they don't use them any longer is they didn't feel like they had enough clarity on what the survey was really telling them, what information it was really concluding to recommend a change in practice, policy, or procedures for each particular district. So that was their challenge and they decided to move away from using the particular company. So, but I'm sure perhaps other districts have had a different experience where they feel like it's been very valuable. But I haven't talked to a district that has shared that at this point yet.
Not get, and thank you. I did not get the opinion from the representative that I talked to that they do any analysis. I think they're just presenting the data and leaving it up to the district for analysis.
They shared with me that they do make conclusions on what districts should consider. But whether or not those conclusions are accurate based on the data being provided or whether or not they make sense for the culture of our district to, to truly consider, I'm not sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I'm, I don't follow your math and I, I lost, you lost me there. If we have 10,000 students at $14 a student-
Right.
That's 14 grand. That's, that's the package for those three surveys of all those students. That's not, that's not compounded per year. So each year would be this roughly the same rate if our graduation rates stay the same.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Gotcha. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, comments on this? Mr. Mecca?
So, so the $14 student price is for all three surveys?
Correct.
Could you break that down? Because I think I had spoken to you about lesser packages, let's call them.
Correct, that's, that's that package for those three surveys. That would be a senior exit, then they come back in 18 months, then they come back in five years. They do have a introductory survey, which is a flat rate, $300 per school. It's an online senior exit survey. So that would be, for our district, that would be a flat rate of $900. And it's basically, they're all taking an online exit survey when they graduate. That's it.
I will just say, I would really like to have further discussion and look into this because to get feedback after 18 months and five years, I certainly do want, do not want to spend money on something where people might be deleting these surveys and not even taking them to begin with. And I'd like to see what we currently do. Guidance counselors collect info before students leave. There's usually exit interviews that are, that are being done by guidance counselors already. I just would hate to see that we're already doing things in-house that we're not spending money on.
To Suzanne's point then, and maybe Phil made the same point or Kurt down there made the same point. If with the introductory package, the $300 per school or whatever, that information sounds like it could be duplicative.
Could be a starting point, and we could build on that.
That's not what I was saying.
Duplicative, yes.
I think he's about to say agrees with your motion to move this forward or something.
Mrs. Beeger?
I want to say one more thing about this too. We're lucky in this district to have WITS and have all our kids' data here in-house, their own system. And we're discussing sharing our kids' data out with another company. To spend money on that, I'm just not sure it's in our best interest when we may have the capability within our own employees to do something similar. And I'm not saying that we can't draw conclusions from surveying post-graduates, it's a good idea. But whether or not we want to pay a company to do that, I just think we should discuss this further before really thinking about the pricing and packages when we have pretty talented personnel in our own district.
No, I couldn't agree with you more. And I'm not pitching this, as I said, I'm not promoting this, I'm more presenting this. But I, but I do agree, you know, $14 a student, say, you know, we round that up in 1,000 students, that's $14,000 a year. But the question on the $14,000 a year, of course, comes back to, you know, if we do it in-house, are we spending more than $14,000? Is that enough administrative work to keep somebody busy or than save $14,000 with the benefits and all that? I mean, this is the, my business mindset that kicks in and goes, is this one of those scenarios where outsourcing actually saves the district money? If this is the path that we want to go down. Not saying that this is the path we're going to go down though, so. Dr. Banater?
I just echo some of the comments that were, that were raised at the table, and that's beyond even just the cost. I, I do think it's important to make sure that we look at, are the results actionable? And, and, and to me, that's going to be a key. You know, if we do it in-house and we have control over the survey so that we can ask the questions, we may have a little bit more of an ability to tailor the survey questions so that we can obtain data that can inform decisions and is actionable. It would be nice to know if you're looking at this company, if they can produce actionable findings at the end of the day. If not, then we just have additional data.
Valid question. Mr. Mecca?
Sorry, I feel like we're beating the proverbial dead horse. But that, that just kind of made me think that perhaps even in addition to information about college and career readiness, maybe if we were to do our own survey or if, if this company offers it, perhaps we'd want to get a survey as to what students that recently graduated thought of the quality of the education they received. I don't know if that's part of the service that the company offers, but-
Well, remember, you can customize questions on the survey that they produce, so you can ask literally any questions you want. Any other comments? If not, I will move on. So I paused there, that was results from me on the convention. Did anybody else that attended the convention want to comment, question, state anything from any of the classes that they took? Yes, Mrs. Van Seis, please.
I would just like to bring up one of the sessions that I attended. I know that Mrs. Leatherbarrow also attended it. And it was just about the diverse community, it was called. So just what I would like to ask if the rest of the board is in approval is perhaps we can have a future presentation just on what we are currently doing within the district, in the classroom and in the community, to promote diversity and then maybe what still needs to be done that we know of. And we're talking anything from maybe having different community cafes at different schools, health fairs, any types of things that are showing. And when I say diversity, what they explained is that's really family engagement. So knowing that we have such a diverse population among us, what are we doing to help engage families and make everyone feel like that they have a very pertinent part in this district? So if the rest of you are on board, perhaps the district can just give us a brief presentation on kind of current status, where we're at, what we're doing at this time in regards to diversity.
Mr. Meyer?
I'd only say that I agree with the sentiment and I'm on board with that idea.
I see a bunch of heads nodding, so I'm going to assume that that means acknowledgement, yes. I like the idea. Any other comments, any other questions from anybody else that attended the convention? Yes, Dr. Marslov?
A question, diversity is a very big, broad topic. Are we talking about diversity in the Human Resources Office? Are we talking about diversity of students? Are we talking about diversity in terms of families and languages they speak? Or what exactly, if we were to do something like this, is the board looking for? Is there a certain goal you have in mind in terms of such a report? What do you, what do you want us to drive at?
Mrs. Van Seis?
So with this, I really think the diversity that was touched on here and that was so intriguing to myself is really the family aspect. So with all of our different cultures that we have within this district, what are we doing currently within the district to try to promote engagement and involvement with our families? They even talked about how New York State PTSA actually has a website with a tab for family engagement and different things that could be utilized, like a translate at New York State PTSA. That's all you have to do is take a document, submit it, it's translated, brought back. Just steps that we currently are doing within our district to help promote engagement of families. Is really just what I'm looking for.
Thank you. I'm skimming your report here on the diversity. You're talking about involvement, engagement, ways to enhance, promote diverse district community, creating partnerships, translation opportunities for yellow families, various, but yeah, I like it. I, I, yeah. Thank you. Anyone else want to talk about their, their classes or anything at the convention? Don't feel pressured, I know everybody submitted a report here. Mr. Mecca?
I had the good fortune of attending the pre-conference, which was a law pre-conference. And I think I shared through probably too many emails, the slides from the presentation. So hopefully, everybody got them. If anybody needs the slides from the presentation, please let me know. One of the things that stuck with me the most is the, the law conference was broken up into different segments. And one of the segments was about school safety. And one of the points that they made was that most often when there is an internal threat of some sort, that others know of this internal threat. And one of the tasks for a school district is to talk to the students about disclosing what they see to administrators, teachers, adults in the building so that threats can be dealt with before they become threats or issues can be dealt with before they become threats. And I think we probably do a pretty good job with it, but I think it, it had to do with the, with educating our students to work together to ensure a safe environment with, with administrators and staff. So I thought that was a really interesting point that stuck with me is that in every situation, what, there was extensive planning that went into these situations and others knew of, knew of these things before they happened.
Mrs. Beeger?
One of the reasons I was really interested in this conference was I knew there was going to be an overview of ESSA and some of the changes that are coming from that. ESSA stands for Every Student Succeeds Act. And Ira Schwartz, who's, I don't know if author is the right word, but really helped to make some of these changes. One of the things that I was concerned about is the way that they are measuring student accountability. The intention of ESSA is to close gaps. And so what this will do, New York State is expanding their measures in multiple ways. So there was a long discussion about how school districts will be measured. One of the concerns on the table from the state, of course, is state assessments, grades three through eight, because there's such high opt-out rates across the state, how you can measure student achievement when that particular metric may not have 100% participation. So it was very interesting, a little frustrating. It seemed like the comments were a little more passion than the actual presentation. I was hoping to bring some more specific information back to report. A lot of, a lot of it still feels a little confusing to me. Really, the, the state stances, they're obligated to put an accountability system in place. I left feeling like, I know we only reporting on one, but there was one other session I went to towards the end. It was the Superintendent of Comac School District way over in Long Island. But I was really refreshed by it because it reminded, that district reminded me a lot of our district. And they talked a lot about educating the whole child and, and the importance of finding strengths in all areas. And they talk about measuring kids through feeling successful through their graduation rates. They look at, you know, the, the whole pathway. So I don't have a good summary per se of ESSA because there's so many different components. What I was really looking to hear more about was the participation rate and how the lack of participation for state assessments may impact school districts and how we may have to respond to that. It seems that they're kind of shifting that. The commissioner spoke to that a little bit and said, we want to hold kids accountable, but we need to do better with these assessments. So I guess it's one of those to be continued conversations. It really wasn't very definitive. If anything, I just left there feeling very hopeful, talking to other educators and seeing other districts that put emphasis on more than just one metric, but really all the pieces of education for the whole child.
Thank you. Moving on. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the New York State School Board Association membership dues as presented? Dr. Bornstein, Mr. Bornstein, sorry. Is there a second? Mr. Mecca, any discussion? All in favor? Okay, motion carries unanimously. This Saturday, November the 17th, 2018, location to be is at South High School from 9:00 AM until noon in the cafeteria. We will be hosting our community forum. For those that do not know and have not heard me preach consistently of what the community forum is, it's a great opportunity for everybody in the community, students, teachers, staff, administrators, homeowners, anybody, you know, constituents in the community that would like to have a two-way dialogue with the board. So I'm trying to see if I've got down, I don't have down here who is attending the community forum, so I'm going to ask that in a second. But it's a great opportunity for everybody to, to ask questions, comment, give suggestions, praise, whatever, to the board and the superintendent and, and have those questions, concerns, you know, answered, unlike coming to the podium here where- where you're speaking to the board and we don't reply to you because this is just a public meeting. But this is an opportunity to try and get some of those answers. So I encourage everybody to come, please. Invite anybody, your friends, your relatives, you know, anybody that's nothing to do at 9:00 a.m. on a Saturday morning here. On that note, who here at the table is able to attend this week, this coming Saturday? I've got Mr. Bornstein, and let me rephrase the question. Not that I want to highlight it here, but I think almost everybody's hand just went up. Who cannot attend? Dr. Vannader. Can anybody else not attend? Mr. Mecca? And Dr. McClary. Anyone else not attending? Okay, so everybody else will be there. Perfect. Thank you. Mrs. Bieger?
I will have to be one hour late. I apologize.
You will be one hour late.
I will be there from 10 to 12. My apologies.
That's okay. Do we have any volunteers that are going that would like to facilitate? No? Mrs. Van Seis, you look eager to take that job? You are the acting VP tonight, right? There has to be some responsibility there. If nobody wants to do it, I'm fine with doing it again. I've done it many times, so I will facilitate them. Board of Education, school visits. We have this coming Monday, November the 19th, at 7:00 a.m., we will be at South High School. Myself, Mrs. Luthberro, Mrs. Bieger, and Mr. Bornstein are slated, the four of us to attend. Anybody else wish to join us? Mr. Meyer, I will add you down. Anybody else? Again, this is 7:00 a.m. You can usually be out of there by 8:00 a.m. unless you want to tour the school, which sometimes we do and takes about another hour. Nope? Okay. December the 7th is a Friday at 8:00 a.m., Transit Middle School. I am out of town for this, so I have Mrs. Luthberro, Mrs. Van Seis, and maybe Dr. McClary. Do we have a confirmation on that yet, Dr. McClary? No. That puts us dangerously at the line of only two. Dr. Vannader, or yes, Dr. Vannader, thank you, sir. So that is Friday, December 7th at 8:00 a.m. Anybody else? Transit Middle, okay. Then Friday, December the 14th at 7:00 a.m., North High School. I have down myself, Mrs. Luthberro, Mrs. Bieger, Mrs. Van Seis, and Dr. McClary. Anybody else like to join us on that? Nope? Okay, moving on. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the hiring of workers' and rates for pay of capital project voted as presented? Mrs. Van Seis, thank you. Second? Mrs. Bieger, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Dr. Marslov, would you like to give us your community update, please?
Thank you, Mr. Lemay. I would like to start off by saying thank you to all the students, staff members, teachers, and administrators at North High School, in particular their principal, Mr. Andre Thomas, who worked in conjunction with Mr. Tony Skanzuzo and Mr. Tom Metersky, Mrs. Rita Wolf, to respond to an event that took place there today where there was a threat in regards to the safety of the students and staff at North. They did a tremendous job and discovered that the threat was not credible and were able to find the students who made the threat and are working hard to hold them accountable at a very high level. So while that was terrific leadership and cooperation amongst all those I just spoke of, I do want to make sure everyone knows we're not going to tolerate threats like that to any of our schools. So thank you again to all those individuals who made that happen and for all the terrific communication with the North High School community at large. I also want to make mention, I also attended the New York State School Boards Association Conference, and while there are many informative sessions, I think the highlight for me really was having an opportunity to spend time with six of our school board members. It would be great if all nine board members could go, but that wasn't possible. But it was a very nice opportunity at lunch and at dinner and at different sessions to spend time and to connect with and build relationships with school board members sort of outside of the focus, if you will, of the Williamsville Central School District. I found that to be very meaningful in particular to me. And so thank you to those six board members that attended and took part in that. I also want to echo Mr. Lemay's comments about the Saturday community forum. We invite everyone to come and attend at South High School. It's a terrific opportunity to have discussions on any topic that impacts the district. And so we look forward to seeing parents and community members there and having a robust discussion. So this concludes my community update, and I'll turn it over back to you, Mr. Lemay.
Great, thank you. Question, community update. Will we have any of the posters on the Music Capital Improvement Project there? Maybe in the lobby? Can we get some or bring them?
There are posters about the 2018 Capital Project at all of our schools and in our welcome area here at District Office to show people what we are looking to do, what some of the changes might be in terms of renovations, expansions, things of that nature. So people will be able to see that at South as well when they attend our community forum.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, why don't we slide right into the Open Enrollment Projections Report, please, Dr. Marslov?
Thank you again, Mr. Lemay. At this time, I'm going to ask Mr. Skanzuzo to introduce our guests. Each year for the November Board Meeting, we present the findings from a study done by our independent consultant in regards to predicted enrollment over the next five years. We do this for a couple of reasons, really three reasons. One, do we need to look at redistricting our district? Do we need to consider closing or opening new schools? And the third one is for the board to consider, as it's called for in policy by February 1st, whether or not to make any changes to which of our schools are deemed to be for open enrollment. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Skanzuzo, and he can introduce our guests this evening.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Marslov. At this time, I'd like to introduce Dr. Stephen Grossman from the University College of Syracuse University, Office of Research and Development, and the Red Group LLC, respectively. His projections are based upon a review of a number of factors, including but are not limited to the following: current and past five-year enrollment data for the district and each individual school, attendance area, areas by building, in-and-out migration by families, private, parochial, charter school attendance, open enrollment patterns, live birth data, economic factors and housing trends, both new construction and the sale of pre-existing homes, as well as proposed development in the town of Amherst. At this time, Dr. Grossman.
And with that, I'll take any questions. No, just kidding. Thank you. It's always a pleasure to be here, and I know there may be one or two new board members who haven't experienced this report before, but I know you've received the report. Hopefully, you've had a chance to look at it. And I'll go through the highlights and do it as quickly as I can because I know you have a long meeting ahead of you. The introduction was excellent, so I don't have to dwell too much on the background or where, you know, where we come from in terms of having worked with the district. These are the considerations. They were listed in the report. And we look at all of these, but over the years, only a couple seem to really have a major impact. And those each year have been the changes in the kindergarten class size. That's how your enrollments start. The current enrollments, those are the students you currently have. The in-or-out migration, and what that means is there are students that move into the district during each year and students that move out of the district. And the net of that, the net migration, of course, affects your enrollment. Each year, you start with a certain number of students, a certain group of students, I should say, and at the end of the year, you have a different group of students. Although in a district like this, it's relatively stable. I've worked in districts where the elementary schools have one-third of the students change over in the course of a year. And when you talk about the progress reports, federal and state testing and so on, it makes it very difficult to determine how a school is doing when that many students change over. But fortunately, in this district, I don't believe that's as big an issue. And also the economy. When I first started this, the economy was a lot different than it is today. There were a lot of issues around recession and so on. And as time has gone on, we've been seeing the immigration increase in the district as houses are now turning over, empty nesters are selling homes to families and so on. And so that's been factored into the enrollment projections. So what we'll do is we'll talk, as we do, we talk about kindergarten through grade 12 first, then focus on elementary schools, focus on middle schools, focus on high schools, and then some brief conclusions. So the first graph you're looking at is the famous live birth data. And fortunately, the state provides us with live birth data since 2002 by district, which for demographers working on enrollment projections is tremendous because you don't have to just try to sort of extrapolate to the district from the county or from census tracts. And you can see that there's a definite trend that has followed. The live birth data and the enrollments five years later follow a very similar pattern. And the difference between the number of students or the number of live births in a particular year and the enrollments vary by 10 to 20%. But in this district, it's always been positive since we've been doing this. You can see it's been quite some time. And that means that youngsters are moving into the district in the ages of zero to four during the time period, during that five-year time period. I've seen graphs that look like, you know, an oscilloscope going up and down where the lines cross and so on, depending on the year. But this district is very, very stable in that effect. And then the grade levels, you can see clearly, there are smaller kindergartens in first grade and second grade than the ninth through 12. So you're going to have attrition as the larger classes move out and the next grade moves in. What's been keeping your enrollment stable is this in-migration, the fact that there continually are students moving in K-12 to offset. It hasn't been enough to keep the enrollments level for the past, I don't know, 10 years or more. But now you're starting to see those numbers equalize out. And we'll talk later about that. Now, the open enrollment is something we looked at, and we found that it doesn't seem to be affecting the overall enrollments in the buildings. The elementaries were, you know, small numbers. The high schools, which were one of the issues that we talked about, they're basically canceling each other out. The numbers are so small when you compare to, you know, over 1,000 students in the building that it really isn't a factor in the enrollments. It's a factor for those students, but it's not a factor in the enrollment. So we have some assumptions that we gleaned from all the data that we analyzed. Kindergartens will continue to be smaller than 12 grades for quite a while, a few years. In-migration will offset some of the attrition. In fact, as those numbers get closer, all of the attrition. The economy will continue its recovery, we hope. Other factors will stay stable. So for example, you have quite a number of students that are in private schools, parochial schools and so on in the area, but it always seems to stay pretty stable in terms of the numbers. So we don't anticipate any closures of schools that would cause great numbers of students to suddenly return to the district. So looking at a five-year history, K-12, we can see that over five years, the last five years, the overall enrollment has decreased a little over 200 students. We anticipate in the next five years that that number will be actually increasing. And this talks about from 2019, 20, all the way out 10 years, it would decrease 34 based on the current size of the kindergarten, first, second grade classes, moving all the way up. I have more faith in the five-year than the 10-year, but it looks like enrollments are basically going to stay the same for at least five years, unless there's some unanticipated change, big change. If we look at the elementary five-year history, let me, so I don't get a stiff neck, let me look at my own. The elementary grades, K to four, we saw a decrease of 123 in the five-year history. But moving forward, oops. There we go. Yes, moving forward, we see an increase as the larger fourth grades are gone and now the kindergartens moving in and the first, second, and third grades and the numbers of students moving in are actually going to cause an increase in elementary schools. Now, the numbers, the increased numbers are going to be relatively small, so they shouldn't have huge impacts on any school. Forty-seven more over five years in Country Parkway. And these go from 1920 to 2324. Forty-three in Dodge Forest, 45. I mean, these are really small numbers, spread out over all the grade levels. Fifty-one in High Maple East, minus six, which is basically the same, no change. And Maple West, there we go, 11, which is basically no change. So relative stability, but a different scenario now. Now we're at level or slightly increasing, whereas in the, for, you know, the last decade or so, it's always been decreasing. Middle school five-year history, we had 119 students decrease over the past five years. Now we're looking at an increase. Again, these larger eighth grades are moving out, and you're not going to see as big a difference between the eighth grades and the incoming fifth grades, and kids keep moving in. So again, small number when you consider the size of the grade five through eight cohort. It's going to be pretty stable. So we're looking at Casey with an increase of 72, Heim with an increase of, or a decrease of 45, Mill staying about the same, Transit, an increase of 50 over the five-year period. So those are relatively small impacts in terms of the changes and well within what we call a margin of error. High school, the same thing, same scenario. We actually increased a little bit over the past five years, but then now we're going to see the smaller classes moving through, being, replacing these larger graduating classes. And at the same time, you're seeing kids move in even at the high school level. So over the large number of kids you're talking about, you're only looking at a decrease of 211, 74 at East, 30 at North, and 107 in South, based on what we have now. And things can change. You might move a program here or there to affect the kids in the building, but nothing remarkable there, just basically stable with year-to-year variations. So what we're seeing is... So what we're seeing is, and I'm starting, if you've been here a while, you know I'm starting to sound like a broken record, but, you know, if you know what a record is. K-12 enrollments may level out with increases in the elementary, middle schools, and decreases in the high school. No changes in attendance or your feeder patterns will be necessary. You may want to do things for other reasons, but not due to the number of kids. No major changes in facilities will be necessary. There's certainly plenty of room. And no changes in open enrollments are recommended based on the nominal impact that that's had. So with that, I can ask for questions, if there are any. And I know I've done such a good job, there probably aren't any. Again, it's been a pleasure. I want to thank the staff for all the help each year in getting this done, and thank you. A question? Yes?
I do have one question. When you make these projections, in particular for the younger classes, what are the most important variables, or how are you coming up with these projections? I'm guessing that once you figure it out for one grade, you just project it out across?
Yeah, there's a, well, there's two things. One is we go to the live birth and we add a percentage to project the kindergarten class. And then that gives us three years, three years out because the projections stop around 2000, I mean, the enrollment, the kindergarten, the live birth numbers stop around 2016. So you can only go so far. And then you, I just carry that forward. And then we use the cohort survival ratio, which is from grade to grade and year to year, we calculate for five years, we calculate the retention or loss. So it's like the number you multiply by in your projections based on the historical record is like 1.02 or 2 percent increase from one to two. Another one might be 1.05 or 5 percent increase from, say, grade four to five. And you work that in as you go. And if there's a decrease, you decrease the number. And when you get that all, and so you get that all in a spreadsheet and it gives you your class sizes projected. You have to redo it every year because it changes, the history changes. Each year you add and the year that you cut off changes the cohort survival. Nothing ever goes up forever or goes down forever. So you have to keep doing it, have to keep.
And how do you, how do you spread that across the different elementary schools, for instance?
Oh, I work with every school individually, every grade, every school. So I know the enrollments for the last five years of every school and every grade.
Let's say for Forest?
It's calculated by school.
For Forest, for instance, if it's your first year in school, right? We don't, how do you ascertain how many kids are going to be entering into Forest?
Because I work with every school's kindergarten and I, and based on the current percentage of the kindergartens, you know, if I take the total and I divide, I divide Forest's proportion of that kindergarten, that's what they get of the projection. So it's based on what percentage of the kindergartens, the total kindergarten each school has had in the historical data, and then I use that to project. So it's based on a historical rate, and that will change. Probably the least accurate number is going to be the kindergarten because those are some fuzzy numbers. But then as you move through, it balances out. So we did well this year at the end of the report. We did a comparison of last year's enrollments and the projections. And I think I was 13 off or something on the total, so. But building by building, it gets a little, a little bit squirrelier, but not bad. Plus or minus 5 percent is what I like to, you know. If I don't hit it within 5 percent, I did something wrong. Sorry for that long-winded explanation. Don't get me started.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other question? Again, it's a pleasure to come and see everybody every year. Take care.
Thank you, Dr. Grossman.
I have a question, but for Dr. Marslov in the district. This report, I was noticing the elementary schools, currently this year, we're at 3,443 students. And I know we've consistently talked about reducing class sizes and whatnot. In our peak about five years ago, four years ago, we were at 3,566 students. But this report shows a projection in five years of us being at 3,666 students. That's an increase of 223 students. If we want to maintain class sizes, I know the concern of moving forward, trying to even reduce class sizes in the elementary with space. Is this a concern and is this something that we have to be thinking about and perhaps budgeting for, I don't know, the next capital improvement, the next, who knows? Or is this too far down the road, five years, for us to be concerned with?
Well, I think it's certainly a concern. I don't think it's an immediate concern. I think once we see where enrollment goes over the next couple of years, it will sort of, and we get a renewed report each year, of course, we can see where it's trending. Is it continuing to trend in that direction on an upward slant or not? And then we can make those decisions that we need to make in terms of, do we keep the class size ratios guidelines the same? Do we increase them, reduce them? Do we need to look at our facility space at our elementary schools, for example, and plan actively from there what we need to do?
Okay. Great. Thank you. Would someone like to make a motion, and I'm going to label them off here, the current open enrolled schools? Would someone like to make a motion to continue the approval of Dodge Elementary, Forest Elementary, Casey Middle, Heim Middle, East, North, and South High Schools designated as open enrolled schools? Mr. Mecca, is there a second? Mrs. Van Seis, thank you. Any discussion on this?
I have a question.
Mr. Dr. Bar, Mr. Bornstein, I keep giving you the doctor title tonight. Apologies.
What constitutes an open, a school that is, has open enrollment designation?
Dr. Marslov?
So each year, students can elect to open and roll in a school. And traditionally, the deadline for them to let the district know that would be February 1st. We've recently changed the regulation to be June 1st to allow parents and families a longer period of time to make that determination for the next school year. If a student open enrolls in one of these open enrolled schools that the board designates, they can do that, but they have to provide their own transportation to the school. We do not provide any busing. If you live in the South District and you want to open and roll in North, you're welcome to do that as long as you find your own ride to North High School each day and home, again, at the end of the day. That's been in place for at least 20 years in terms of choices in the district. In terms of open enrolled schools, we must review this each and every year to make sure that it's a valid, rational decision on which schools are going to be open enrolled schools and which ones are not. It's difficult to add, for example, Transit or Mill as middle schools to be open enrolled when their enrollment continues to stay steady and perhaps even increase a little bit. So that's just an example of using the enrollment data to make a decision on allowing open enrollment at a specific school.
So it's to spread the enrollment throughout the district so that no particular school has too many students? Why would a family choose one school over their home school?
Well, just to give you an example, maybe some families have parents that graduated from East High School, but they live in the North section of the district and they want their children to attend East High School and they don't want to move. And so they choose through the open enrollment process for their children to go to East High School. Another example is child played on the youth sports team with other children from a specific area of the district and they all want to be part of the same team in high school. They may all choose to team up at a particular high school. Maybe it's not sort of that exaggerated, but maybe there's a few students that do that and want to play together, if you will. Another example used to be for certain programs. We didn't used to have Project Lead the Way, pre-engineering courses available like they are at all three high schools now, years ago. So certain students would pick a certain high school based on having that curriculum and that program available to them. But I would say programmatically, our high schools are pretty close to being the same in terms of what's offered.
Right. Okay. This is just my way of trying to understand why there's even open enrollment at all. But you just sort of explained the history of it, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Mecca?
Going along with the questions, if we were to, let's say, universally rescind open enrollment, would those students that have previously chosen to open enroll in any particular school still be afforded that opportunity? Not that I'm thinking of doing that or anything. I'm just saying, like, if, let's say we chose for one of the schools to not be open enrolled because enrollment was getting too high. Like, North High Schools always has pretty high enrollment. If we were to decide not to do open enrollment, would we continue that for those that had previously chosen to open enroll there, likely?
That would be up to the board. The board could say, anyone that's open enrolled in North is no longer going to be allowed to do that. Or the board could say, we're going to sort of grandfather those students into North High School, but we're not allowing any new open enrollees for North High School. So you guys would make that decision.
For the record, if a parent chooses to open enroll, can they swap every year and go to a different school for four years of high school?
No, they cannot. You get one bite at the proverbial apple. You can open enroll at a school. If you decide that that school's not for you or you no longer want to open enroll that school, at that school, you can go back to your home school. But you may not open enroll a second or a third time.
Is the district making any recommendations and changes to open enrollment this year?
No, we are not.
Okay. Great. Any other questions? Okay, all in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Would someone like to move the first readings of the following revised and new policies? Starting with the first one, number 5410, Purchasing Procurement of Goods and Services, and new policy number 5413, Procurement Uniform Grant Guidance for Federal Awards. Dr. McClary, thank you. Is there a second? Mrs. Beeger, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Would someone like to move to table the motion for a second reading and adoption of these two policies at our December 11th, 2018 regular board meeting? Mrs. Van Seis, thank you. Is there a second? Mrs. Beeger, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Would someone like to make a motion to resolve to approve the district's corrective action plan for the 2018 audit as presented? Mrs. Beeger, is there a second? Mrs. Van Seis, thank you. Any discussion on this? Yes, Mr. Mecca?
I read this thinking the concept of corrective action plan means that you were doing something wrong. And that doesn't seem to be the case. Did I miss something?
I don't believe you did. I believe from the summary there that basically was saying that we're doing the right thing. And I think we addressed some of the state's concerns, but that's really about it. I think, and I don't recall if it was in this report because this was a month ago that I read this. Mr. Maturzky, you can clarify, but isn't this where the state tells us our reserve funds are too high and we have to lower them and blah, blah, blah? Or am I mistaken that for another time of the year? Any other questions? Okay, all in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Would someone like to make a motion to resolve to approve the Erie One BOSI's installment purchasing agreement as presented? Mr. Mecca, thank you. Second? Mrs. Beeger, any discussion? I do have one question. I didn't notice it in the packet. How many computers are we talking here? I saw monthly payment plans and all that stuff, but it didn't give a quantity. Do we know roughly?
Go ahead, Mr. Maturzky. I'm sure it depends on what kind of computers we're talking about, so.
Yeah, these are mostly our printers.
Oh, okay.
So these are our main copiers that are in the building. So the middle schools have main copy centers. District office has a main copy center. And we replace these once every five years, and this is the year we're replacing them.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you. Any other, any other questions? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Dr. Marslov, would you like to start the 2019, 2020 budget development presentation, please?
We don't really have a presentation for this. We do have a listing in your report item that talks about the historical budget reductions that have taken place over the years. And I'd certainly encourage the board to read that and ask any pertinent questions about the choices the district has made over the years when it comes to budget reductions.
Anyone here at the board have questions, comments? There's a number crunching report in depth. Okay. Thank you. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the property tax settlement and transfer amount from the tax, sure, I can never say this. Sure, fund as presented.
Sean, can I, I'm sorry, can we just go back to the last one very quickly?
Go back? You have a question on it? Sure.
Yeah. So part of the report, it said, we need to closely monitor the New York State Retirement System contribution rates. They normally increase with interest rates. Do we have any thoughts or projections that you might insight as to what might happen over time and how much liability that is for us?
They're fluctuating, actually, for this upcoming budget year. It's luckily, they are looking to maybe trend down a bit. But usually, those rates lag about a year or so behind what may happen. So we just have to be very careful about reviewing them and looking at the trends rather than at a reacting to every year's change that may happen up or down. So right now, I think we're pretty stable with those rates.
Thank you. You're welcome. You just wanted me to say it again. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the property tax settlement and transfer amount for the tax surcery fund as presented? Thank you, Mrs. Van Seis. Is there a second? Mrs. Beeger, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. If you have any liaison or conference reports, please send them to Mrs. Carey through WITS. Please let the board know if you're unable to attend a meeting so that another board member here is able to cover you. Does anyone know or need any coverage for the coming month? Nope? Okay. Mrs. Beeger?
I'll just say, I'm going to be, I swapped meetings with Mrs. Leatherbarrow this month, so I will be at the Dodge PTA meeting this week.
Okay. And if you didn't pick up on it before, the Transit Middle School visit, Mrs. Leatherbarrow will be acting in my behalf since I will be out of town. Are there any legislative matters that anyone would like to discuss? Nope. Nothing in curriculum, nothing under personnel this month, nothing under district support facilities, special needs. Does anyone have a request or matter to discuss under the committee of the whole?
If we just back up a second, under number 18, District Facilities and Support Service, recently, a listing of obsolete and broken equipment was sent around. And I wonder if any action is required on that list. And I'm wondering if after staff and educators go through that list to see if there's any usable items, if those things could be distributed to other nonprofits in the community or made available to other nonprofits in the community. Does that ever happen?
Mr. Maturzky, I believe, answered this question from me, I think, two or three years ago. So I will concede to Dr. Marslov and Mr. Maturzky to answer it again, please.
Normally, we do not do that. It's... Um, it's, y- eh, there, there is the ability to do a special approval to, to provide items like that. But it's purchased with public funds, so normally you're gifting those items then to those agencies. And, and normally it's not what we would do.
Fair enough.
I, I think I've been interested in this in the past too, because it seems like there are a lot of usable items that are deemed obsolete. And, uh, I'm thinking of it from more of a financial standpoint of, you know, maybe we should hold an auction for some of those items.
Go ahead, Mr. Maturzky.
Uh, we, we do utilize, um, on large items, auction, uh, sites. And we do bid them out. On the small items, uh, I can go back, um, quite a while, uh, almost twenty years to when, when we held, um, just, uh, open sessions for our community to come in and we collected all of the materials and put them in one place. And it was not cost efficient to do that. Uh, most of the items, although they look like they're usable, they, they're really not. So we, we, what we do is we s- take them for scrap metal where we can. We get money for the scrap metal. And the, most likely, the other piece we do is we recycle, so that we're just not throwing them in, in dumpsters.
I was fortunate that the NISBA conference, while walking the vendor floor, that a certain vendor, as vendors usually do, grabbed my arm and said, let me tell you about my auction services. What district are you from? And once he realized it was Williamsville, he goes, oh, we already do your auctions. Thank you very much. So I appreciate that. Any other comments, questions on that? Perfect. So on to committee of the whole. Any requests or matters to bring up from anybody here on the board? Yes, Dr. Vannator?
Yes, uh, thank you. Um, I've one, one item, uh, that has, uh, as of late, received some attention from, uh, individuals in the community. I believe it's also come up at, uh, some of the recent PTA meetings, uh, concerning, uh, information that's being shared regarding changes in policy when it comes to teachers asking for money for either supplies or field trips. So I was just hoping we should shed some light, uh, on that with community members. What was the impetus behind, uh, this quote unquote new policy change? Um, what does this change actually affect? What does it not affect? And do we expect to see further changes, uh, down the line, uh, in this matter so that people can, um, have some forewarning? If need be.
Marslov, please.
Um, this was brought forward to us from our auditors. And if we are going to require something of students, um, in terms of, uh, academic experience or a field trip, or whatever the case might be, that would be something that we need to provide for our students. If we can't provide it for our students, then we should pay for it through fundraising, through PTA or booster donations, or through some other avenue. Um, to ask students to pay for, um, attendance at a field trip, uh, for a particular class, um, is not considered to be appropriate.
And so, eh, the examples that, um, I've heard about would be, um, English books at East High School, um, or exactly that, field trips. So how do we plan to proactively communicate this and/or work with booster clubs and PTAs so that we don't miss a step in, in the opportunities i- in front of us?
Yeah, we've already communicated with our principals, who have spoken to, uh, teachers and parents and PTAs. I've actually had a chance at certain PTAs where I presented to be able to have a chance to talk about it. Um, so we're doing that. There may be some budgetary items the board needs to consider in the budget process for next year. Uh, you mentioned books at East High School, so certain novels, um, at East High School, students are asked to purchase the novel. They can then annotate in the novel. But that would be akin to like a workbook. So if you give students a workbook, the district still needs to pay for the workbook, even though the student's gonna write in it and it's essentially not going to be reusable for the most part for the next year. So we may need to look at certain situations where there's going to be a budgetary impact, uh, for certain schools. Right now, we're sort of taking stock. Um, we have a, a high school principals meeting later this week where we're asking our principals, are there other examples of this? Where we're asking students to buy certain books or materials, um, in order to be successful in the class. So once we have all of that information together, we can, we can begin to determine logical next steps.
Okay, great. Thank you. Yeah, my next question was gonna be, what is a potential budgetary impact? So o- other questions that I'm getting, just because I wanted to, eh, put it out there just for consideration or additional research would be, traditionally, when my, my sons have gone to, to Maple East, um, parents are asked to purchase or, uh, bring in, uh, school supplies, sometimes to the tune of, I think this year, close to fifty dollars for, for my son Knox. Are we going to stop doing that?
No. Um, as a matter of fact, I, I was joking with some of the parents at a PTA meeting. We may ask our community to exceed the tax cap someday, and in exchange, we, they would no longer have to provide school supplies, binders, paper, folders, pens, pencils, so on and so forth. And it probably would pass. But at any rate, no, we're still gonna ask, um, parents to provide, uh, school supplies. The list can get extensive. And beyond just the cost is the ability to find some of the items. There's some items on the lists, I think it's like, uh, one by one Post-it note. I don't think they make those anymore. I mean, there's things that are sort of obsolete that are on our list, so we're asking principals to review those lists and make, uh, potential deletions or changes, uh, to those lists of what we're asking our parents to, to get for their children.
So then another question I was asked was, how, what is the rationale then behind not having teachers ask for money for books or field trips, yet we're still asking for school supplies? So we're still asking for monetary contributions from parents. Is there a, i- is there a threshold? Wh- where is that line drawn between the respective asks and the respective costs?
Yeah, the, the line is essentially this. When you're asking them to buy books, that's an essential piece of what they need in order to succeed in the course. Folder, pen, calculator, pencil, whatever it might be, those are items that also have other uses as well besides just helping a student, um, do well in a particular course. So, um, that's sort of, I guess, where the distinction lies. You know, if you say, um, in AP Biology, you need a certain textbook, and students, you need to pay two hundred and twenty dollars for the textbook, that would not be a fair ask. That would be something that the student should be given by the district, uh, in order to use it and, and be successful in the course. You say, we need to get a yellow binder for AP Biology. Well, they might be able to use it for AP Biology, and the next year use it for AP Chemistry, and the year after that for Physics, and so on and so forth. So it has multiple uses, um, even beyond just success or failure in a particular course.
Okay. So can I, just a couple, a couple more questions?
Gonna bounce off of what you just said.
To follow up, so, um, and obviously, this is in the works right now. So you mentioned the opportunity for booster clubs, fundraising, possibly working with PTAs, as we want to provide our students with as many educational and enrichment opportunities as we can, in particular, field trips. And not just to free venues, but also to, uh, maybe ideal venues, uh, with respect to the education. How do we plan to come up with a framework of what is appropriate and within what would be acceptable to the audit committee? So that we can actually tap into those resources from, from these other, other ancillary groups like fundraisers or, or PTAs?
Not sure I'm clear on your question on this one.
So if a teacher can't, I mean, if a teacher can't ask students to purchase an English book, but the PTA has funds that can support different initiatives, or someone believes it's very important in the curriculum to take their students to whatever it may be, some, some venue, is there a way that, eh, what is the process? Does it change at all with this new policy with respect to how that teacher looks for funding through either external associations or o- other organizations?
I don't think so. I think those conversations go on all the time right now. Um, there's times when the PTA will say, yes, we're gonna fund your field trip to the zoo. And other times they'll say, no, we're not gonna fund your field trip to the Nutcracker, uh, performance, or vice versa. It just depends on, A, how much, how many resource, how much they have in resources in a particular PTA. And B, sort of how they value the different things they may or may not fund as a PTA group.
So, so then, just so I'm, I'm, because I've received a lot of questions, just so I understand the process. So if a teacher wants to take a student class somewhere in the past, they could have asked, hey, if you're gonna be part of this course, it's, it's five dollars to go. Now then, before you can announce that, that teacher would apply for funding from an external source like the PTA. And if they received the amount of money to cover every student, they could then suggest that, or?
No, what the teacher should do, if they're looking to cover funding for, let's say, a field trip someplace, and it's five dollars per student, they should start with their principal. Go to the principal. The principal may have funding in his or her budget to provide the five dollars per student for the field trip. If the principal does not, the principal might say, I can't fund this, but let me talk to the PTA president and see what we can do. They have those conversations at the next PTA meeting. They might vote and say, we're gonna provide up to five hundred dollars for the students to go on a field trip to wherever the place may be. That's generally a process that's been used in the past and passed, and we would continue to expect to be used. We want people to, to come forward and, and look to do new things with students.
Sure, that's, that's great. Uh, so first go to the principal. The principal can then look at discretionary funds.
Yes.
Okay, that's wonderful. Um, I, I think, eh, obviously, we're out there communicating this. I, I think there's a continued opportunity to, uh, present that information, um, and that, the, the different, um, protocols, uh, that are in place. Uh, I think my last question would be, does this policy, uh, based on the audit findings, pertain only to mandatory core curriculum classes? Does it pertain to things like art, music, photography?
It should be all classes, but there are certain times where, is it a class that's going on a field trip? Or is it a, is it a club or an activity that's leading the field trip? You know, that happens sometimes in music where they'll go on a trip to out of state. And that's a different scenario. It's not graded. It's not part of the student's academic sort of, uh, experience, if you will. But they might go out of state to perform for, for some group or some venue that is beneficial to the student experience, and students may choose to attend that. At which point, there is fundraising, there is an ask for money, if you will, uh, things of that nature. The other piece to keep in mind with this, and I'm not saying this to be critical of any school or any principal, but last year, we had over thirty-three thousand dollars in supply codes that weren't spent by our principals. So there are times when a principal might say, hey, I can transfer some dollars from this supply code to fund your field trip, or fund your activity, or whatever it is. And that might not happen because we're asking, uh, children and parents to come forward with those dollars.
Do you think there might be an opportunity, just because i- i- at certain schools, it seems like th- there are a lot of questions around this, as well as, I'm not gonna say missive info- misinformation, but maybe lack of information. Due to the fact that this is a, a, a policy change, is there a way that we could put forth, a simple one-pager for community members to reference, uh, and, and maybe answer some of these questions? Or are we just going to, do, do we prefer to just let it go through the official teacher channels and administration channels at the school?
Um, we can put something together. My fear with that, though, is whenever you put together a document like you're describing, one or two pages, something's gonna get left out, something's gonna get missed, something's going to not quite, you know, fit into the defined role of what can be funded, what can't, when you can ask for money, when you can't. So i- it can make it challenging. So we would ask our principals to come forward and ask those questions for clarification when it's not quite crystal clear on what should be funded or, or what cannot be funded. Um, so that's certainly a possibility. And I, I also want to point out, i- it feels like a new policy. It's really not.
Right.
I think it's a way we've done business has been, it's just the way we've done business. But it doesn't mean it was the right way for us, unfortunately, to do business. It means we just need to pay closer attention to it and, and look at, uh, potentially changing how we do it.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Just to add on to that, um, several of us are on the audit committee that sat in, and when it was discussed, it makes perfect sense. These are practices that should have been done, that currently aren't, currently, sorry, are not, that need to be put in effect. One of the biggest things that was brought up is cash flow. The amount of cash flow going between people's hands, who's accountable for that? So when a child comes home and says, I need X, Y, and Z for this class, you're going now and buying additional supplies that really should have been maybe part of the curriculum in that class. Or I need ten dollars, and it must be cash for this teacher. So you're bringing in cash for a teacher, you know, the auditor had said, this is not, this is not best practice here. You need to have this cleaned up. We, as a committee, felt that that was our responsibility to make sure that we are keeping a closer eye, that measures proper procedures, practices are put in place. And in regards, when I look at it as, as school supplies, school supplies to me are necessities as a parent and an educator. I look at those are, those are needs for my child to learn. These other things are supplemental. So a field trip, that's case by case. It might not be that, no one's trying to not permit field trips anymore. It's just, it's gotta go through a different channel, maybe, um, a different practice. And it really shouldn't be so much of the parents that are agitated. It's just the teachers have to follow a different procedure now to really, in all honesty, clean things up. So that's kind of, you know, when I have a child that comes home and says, I need a novel for my English class that we have to read, and it's gotta be hardcover, and this is the title, I am thinking, wow, I have to buy that myself if that's part of the curriculum? So there are certain things that were recommended to us as a committee that we felt very strongly that this district is very large, and we need to have, um, just better practices when it comes to these items.
No, thank you for those comments, and that, and that makes sense. I, I think some of the energy or the questions I've received, uh, from stakeholders in the district is just around understanding what was the rationale, because that's never been explained to them perhaps before the, the change was made. Um, and, and the comments of, well, gosh, had we known, we could have planned better, or we could have had some contingency plans in place. So I think there are some constituents that, uh, may not be aware of the full rationale and the fact there was, you know, intellectual and logical reasons behind it. So there might be an opportunity for us to communicate that. So a- anytime there's change, some, you know, it's never, never easy. But to communicate that this was done, uh, for rational reasons, in a thoughtful way. Um, a- and then also just address i- if we expect any additional changes to come down the line, um, provide, you know, additional timing so that, uh, ancillary, um, resources might be able to be, uh, found.
Dr. Vannator, we're gonna work on coming up with that explanation so that it's more clear for everyone going forward. I do wanna mention the, your example of books at East High School. We're gonna continue to ask kids to purchase the books until we can put a plan together that's going to have a budget impact for next year. So if, our plan is for next year, it'll be provided by the district. Um, one other aspect to this that comes into play from time to time is there may or may, may not be scenarios where an educator asks a student to bring something in and have a point added to his or her grade point average for a marking period based on the student bringing in an item that's
I've heard that.
Shared and helpful to the class. That's not a good grading assessment practice. Again, doesn't mean it, i- i- it was outlawed, you know, many, many decades ago. But it doesn't mean it doesn't happen from time to time. So we just need to gently remind people, hey, it's probably not a good idea to ask someone for a box of tissues, and you'll give them a point on their marking period average.
I, I, I think the, the rationale makes sense. I think the opportunity, as you alluded to, is even just having this discussion is helpful. Because it allows community members to know that this was a rational, thoughtful, proactive decision on our part. And letting them know that maybe this is even a, a phased-in approach. We, we recognize that there's an opportunity for improvement. Um, we didn't just make a willy-nilly change on the spot. This was thoughtfully done, and it might have to be phased in due to a variety of different constraints, either opportunities, budget constraints, et cetera. That's, uh, I, I, I very much appreciate, uh, That's...I very much appreciate all the answers and the perspective. I think the opportunity with some stakeholders that have a great deal of concern over this is just to educate and proactively communicate that this is done in a thoughtful, rational way, and here's the plan, here's, you know, why we did it, and this is what to expect moving forward. So thank you.
Thanks, yeah.
Other questions or comments under committee of the whole?
I'll make a little comment.
Mrs. Beeger?
I really enjoyed board docs for the first meeting. It was very nice, the way the, everything was highlighted and set up very nice. For me personally, I will comment. Thank you.
Great, great.
Very cool.
I want to say thank you to Mrs. Carey, Mrs. Kachanetti, and also Mr. Lemay to you because I think you were the one that first brought the board docs to our attention.
Put a lot of time into it.
You can hear the rousing applause from the audience right now?
They're loving it.
Yes.
Are there any correspondences to discuss this evening? Okay, with that, we'll now move into our second public expression period. Same rules as outlined in our first public expression period apply. Anyone wishing to address the board should go to the podium and please sign in at this time. All right. Our next board meeting will be held on Tuesday, December 11th, at 7:00 PM here in district office. I would like to wish all my colleagues here on the board, the assistant superintendents and everybody, a happy Thanksgiving, since we will be already in the holiday season in just a week now. Would someone like to make a motion to adjourn the regular board meeting? Mrs. Van Seis. And thank you, by the way, for acting as vice president tonight. Is there a second? Mrs. Beeger, all in favor? Opposed? You're opposing? Motion carries unanimously. Good night.